Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Monday, July 12th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you're on the phone, you press *9 to raise your hand or lower your hand, and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Just let me just double-check this. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Present.
Mr. Oroco? I have not heard from. Mr. Seiya? I have not heard from. Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Irene. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with learning and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Tropoli, you might swear in and the professionals, please.
Okay, professionals, raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, out to God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. I see on screen Mr. Conliff, Ms. Beam, and I'm not sure, Irene, if we have Mr. Aguirre there?
No, Mr. Aguirre is on vacation this week, so it's just you two.
Okay. Very well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tropoli. Approval of Minutes, regular meeting, June 14th, 2021. Eligible voters. Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Oroco, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, sir.
Motion by Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
Moretti.
Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Vouchers.
We have no vouchers this evening?
Correspondence.
I have no correspondence this evening, but I would like to introduce you to Eileen Coussa. Eileen will be shadowing me so she can learn and possibly do a meeting here or there or do some applications, so.
Okay.
She's here to...
Welcome aboard.
Hi, thank you.
You've got some big shoes to follow there.
Yeah.
You know, if you're 116th of the lady she is, you'll be very good.
Well, she's starting out with a good name, right?
Absolutely.
That's half the battle. You won't have to learn a new name. Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions. Case number BA 1519F, Gross and Gross Associates LLC. Resolution granting final major subdivision approval. Eligible voters: Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Oroco, Seiya, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we... That's Moretti.
Mr. Moretti, do I have a second?
Second, Cantor.
Mr. Cantor. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Okay, applications before the board. We're gonna switch this up a little bit. Wanna bring the last application on for tonight. We'll put it first, because I think we can get through it pretty quickly. So, case before the board, case number BA 2113, Bernard Journey. To bulk variance for existing six-foot fence in front yard on a corner lot. Application Bernard Journey, as applicant owners seeking bulk variance relief to leave his existing six-foot fence in the front yard on premises known as Block 105, Lot 842 Woodside Drive. Expiration date, October 28th, 2021.
Mr. Gurney, I have you here in the meeting, but I also have someone else in the audience with your name. Is there someone else that needs to come in?
No. We were just having problems signing on, but we got two different phones, but we logged off on that, so we're good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gurney, before you begin this evening, I will swear you in, so would you raise your right hand, please? Swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, out to God.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Gurney has sworn. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie. I'm gonna let Charlie take the lead on this, and let's see if we can move this through.
Yeah, so basically, this application is for a six-foot-high solid fence in a front yard on a corner lot. So this is a kind of a interesting property. It's on the corner of Bass Place and Woodside Drive. The dwelling actually faces directly to the corner of those two streets. So the southerly front yard, which is Bass Place, has a six-foot-high solid white fence in the front yard area, pretty much right to the property line. What our ordinance allows is on properties with a corner lot on the practical side, so that would be the one that the building doesn't front on, or that the opposite of the address, so that would be Bass Place. You're allowed a 50% credit for fences from the front yard setback requirement. So in the R3, the front yard setback requirement is 25 feet. This fence would be legally existing if it was set back 12 and 1/2 feet from the Bass Place right away. The fence, as indicated on the applicant survey sketch, is like right on the property line, so a zero-foot setback to like a half a foot probably. So they need relief, one for the fence in the front yard setback. They also need relief from the makeup of the fence, so fences in the front yard area need to be 50% open. This is a solid fence, six foot in height. Along with that, kind of off the back of the property, there's a stream that runs, I think it's Plover Brook. It's a Category 1 water. Our ordinance has requirements for 100-foot stream corridor and then 100-foot stream corridor buffer from that stream. The fence is within the stream corridor, and then the fence, a pool and a shed are within that outer 150-foot stream corridor buffer. So those require relief. And then on top of that also, you know, the shed wasn't shown on the applicant survey. However, when we look at a site, we look at it in the sum of all its parts. So we cited it for also needing relief for setback for the accessory structure. In the R3, structures have to be set back the height. We measured it approximately from a site visit to be about nine feet plus or minus. Looking at the aerial imagery, it's approximately four feet from the property line, so that would require variance. And then also, kind of on that same discussion, as I noted, the stream in the back, there is a Category 1 water. There's repairing restrictions and things like that. Having said that, the flood hazard area rules didn't come into effect until November 20, or I think it's November 5th of 2007. Looking at aerial imageries, that shed, it looks like it was built sometime between July 4th, 2007, and sometimes between August 2008. So looking to hear some testimony from the applicant on exactly when that shed was constructed. If it was constructed prior to the November 5th, 2007, then it would be, you know, predate any flood hazard area rules and not require any permits. And then also, I did speak with the zoning office regarding the shed, and they didn't have anything on their end from construction permits. So if the applicant can shed light on, you know, makeup of the shed, height, when it was constructed, what he uses it for. Is it just for his own personal residential use? Is he running any business operations out of there where he's storing equipment for a business? Can we get some testimony on that, Mr. Gurney?
Yeah, the shed was...
I did interrupt for one second. The other variance is, four feet is allowed in front yard for a fence, not six feet. So they, four feet high, 50% open, and they're at six feet high, so they need variance for the height of the fence as well.
Yeah, thanks, Jen.
The shed is, I believe that was when we moved in, 2004. So within a couple of years of me moving in here, so probably 2004, 2005. It's just stored for, it's just used for, you know, patio furniture, things like that.
So in your best recollection, would you say it was before November of 2007?
Yeah, because I didn't, yeah, we moved in in '03, so it was about a year or so after that, I think.
Okay, and then as far as the, like, foundation of the shed and things like that, is it just on like a stone pad? Does it actually have foundations?
It's on a stone pad, four-by-fours, brushed bluestone.
All right, so I, you know, I'm pretty sure, you know, I'm not fully up on the UCC, but sheds over, it's either 202, 250 square feet, like have certain requirements as far as like foundations and things like that. My recommendation is to chair, as far as granting any variance relief, it'd be contingent on the applicant retroactively getting any construction or building permits for the shed after the fact from the construction department. Would you have any issue with that, Mr. Gurney?
Um, no. Is there permits required for sheds? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, to get a shed, you would have had to, you know, get a permit from the township. And then if it's over a certain size, then that usually can kick it into certain requirements as far as foundations and anchoring and things like that, so.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I have to go through the process for a permit on the shed?
Yes, so what I would say is, I would take no objection to the relief provided they get all the permits from the township after the fact. And then as far as the fence itself, can you talk about when it was constructed? You know, is there access, any gates? Where's access from the yard from there?
Fence, there was an existing chain link fence here when I moved in, probably around the same time we did the shed. It was an old chain link fence. I just, you know, we put the vinyl fence up. Obviously, I had no idea that was, because I have no neighbors, and I have one neighbor on the left side of me, I have no one behind me, so we just put it up for privacy, and it's sort of a dead end back there, so. It's back by the archery range, so it used to be a lot of, you know, well, there still is people sitting back there. It's kind of a dead end. I just did it for privacy and safety. We put cameras up. So we just replaced the chain link with the white vinyl, and then, I guess, I had no idea that that was the front yard technically, because it's so far back from actually my actual front yard, so. That's what happened there. There's, you know, there are two gates. And, I mean, that's pretty much it. It's a white vinyl fence and...
Were permits drawn for the fence?
Um...
There couldn't have been, because he wasn't, he wouldn't be allowed to have put a six-foot-high solid fence in the front yard without a permit.
Yeah, so what hap-
With the variance, so.
Yeah, what happened was, well, this is a while back, but anyway, I don't want to get into that. But, no, there was no permit. Because I was replacing the old fence, I didn't even really know about that. It had to be an additional permit for new fence.
So, Mr. Chair, as far as like the environmental things, I think obviously it was built prior to 2007 November. You know, it wouldn't be subject to any flood hazard area rules and things like that. Obviously, they need to get any after-the-fact things for the shed. As far as the fence, you know, it's, well, it's in a technical front yard area. It's in a practical side, and it's almost like effectively a rear, because, you know, the corner of Bass Place and Woodside Drive is like, you know, a good distance away from where this fence is located, so it's not impacting a site triangle. I don't know if anyone has a plans open, but it'll be more apparent to you. So really, from a sightline perspective, I don't really see any issue with it. I mean, applicant says it's for privacy. They do have a swimming pool, you know. Solid vinyl fence does give you a little bit more privacy than something with some slats or 50% open. You know, if this was the corner lot on a very busy street with a lot of traffic, then maybe this would be a different discussion, you know, with sightlines and things like that. But, you know, the properties to the west are township-owned properties that are partially encumbered by streams and environmental things and things like that. And really, all it's providing access is to, you know, the archery range that's located beyond Bass Place there. So I really don't take any objections. There's only two conditions, obviously getting the after-effect building permits for the shed, and then just providing the town, if they require it, for closeout of the fence permit. Just an ASBIL survey verifying that the fence isn't in the public right of way. It's in fact on your property.
Mr. Chair, can I make a quick recommendation? Is it possible for, excuse me, for Eileen to put up the applicant's drawing? Because I think it'll give everybody a better idea of where that fence is, because it is pretty far back from the corner.
Give me one second.
Thank you, Eileen. I think everybody might like to see it. I was just looking at it myself.
Charlie, I have a couple of questions too, after that comes up.
Hold on.
Sorry, Eileen. I actually...
Eileen, I think I could share it if...
I got it, Charlie.
Oh.
That colored line, correct? So the colored line, Mr. Gurney, that's an accurate representation of the location of your fence?
Correct.
So as you can see, it's a corner lot, so it's technically a frontage Bass Place. You know, looking at the aerials, you know, this is Bass Place on the left here. This is Woodside Drive. If this is the actual location of the fence, you know, this is to a dead end wooded area, back to the archery range here, so, you know, there's not a whole lot of traffic. If there was, you know, typically on a corner lot, you have a site triangle, you know. I would find it very hard to believe that this fence could be anywhere close to a site triangle for the, you know, the configuration of this lot, so.
I think there's a sidewalk between the street and there too, I think I saw, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so there's the curb, sidewalk, the property line, and then the fence.
Thank you for putting that up.
Okay, Mr. Cantor?
Charlie, two questions. First of all, with the pool and a normally-approved fence, doesn't that not have to be six feet high and closed?
I'm not fully up on the pool.
The answer is, the answer to that is no. It's four feet high, and it can be a chain link fence, which is 50% open. It just has to be a one-by-one chain link versus like a two-by-two or one-and-a-half by one-and-a-half. So the answer to that is no. But in this particular instance, it's, the applicants here are asking for relief for the six-foot-high solid fence, and I agree with Charlie, considering it's set so far back from the corner, which has been kind of the issue with these fences on these corner lots. And I do want to add, and I'm sure Charlie Wendell and Ron Tropoli can substantiate this. We have put in our annual report, for as long as I have been a member of this board, that for corner lots, the side yard, or, you know, what constitutes the side to the rear, should not have to be maintained. The fence should not be maintained the same as if it were a regular front. But to date, the governing body has not sought to amend that ordinance, but this is something that we have seen on a number of occasions and have consistently recommended for ordinance change, and it just has not happened.
I would say, as long as I've been on the Rules Committee, we've had it in here, so.
That's right.
Okay, can we go back to full board? Okay, Charlie, you want to run down, okay, you've got to get permits and everything for the shed. Permits for the fence, and, you know...
By the NASBIL showing the fence in the shed, just for, you know, for the town's record, documenting it, making sure it's, nothing's on neighbors' properties, nothing's in the public right of way.
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? It was a little low.
Okay, Charlie, you want to repeat that?
Yeah, so as a condition of the approval, the board's gonna request that you get any after-the-fact building permits for the shed from the township, any after-the-fact permits for the fence from the township, and then also just provide an ASBIL survey verifying that the fence is not in the, you know, public right of way or on anyone's property, and then obviously the same thing for the shed.
Okay, as far as the shed goes, is there, how would I apply for a retro permit? Being that, is there still permits for sheds at all, or no?
There is a permit required for the shed. You should just go to the building department and ask for an application for a permit for a shed. It'll be part of the resolution, so you can submit the resolution with your permit application to the building department. They just want to make sure it's the right size and it's located in the right place.
Pretty sure they can do one permit for both the shed and the fence at the same time.
Okay, yeah, both are on my, I mean, obviously, on my property, not on any green acres or any neighbor's property. So definitely compliant in that respect.
So this just, if the board rules favorably, it makes it complete, completes the record, so, you know, should you sell the property someone down the road, you know, the variance goes with the property, and it's documented clearly in a resolution, but also on a plan, so.
Okay. And we're gonna request that the resolution be recorded, which means it'll be placed on notice to anyone at the county clerk's office, so that'll protect you in the future. Charlie, did we get clarification on the height and square footage? I know there was some comment on that. I don't recall any comment or testimony on the height of the shed.
Yeah, can you clarify that, Mr. Gurney? I scaled, and just based off a site visit, it looks like it's 390 square feet and then approximately nine feet in height.
Yeah, it's a standard white vinyl. There's nothing really... I was talking about the shed or the fence?
The shed, the shed.
The shed? I'm sorry, what was the, I was...
Height and the approximate dimensions.
Yeah. Height maybe not, the top of the roof might be nine. I think it's 12 by nine feet. Yeah, I think it's, I think nine feet's the, yeah, it's not that tall.
How about the footprint?
It's a little longer than a standard shed. I'm not 100% sure of the size. I can go out and measure it real quick if you want.
I can do it.
Mr. Chair, I would say it's approximately 390 square feet. The applicant's gonna be required to provide an ASBIL survey of it, documented for the record. You know, they're gonna have to get any after-the-fact permits for it, so I think, you know, saying what the approximate dimensions are suitable for this.
Okay.
Do you have a problem with that? Mr. Gurney?
Um, no, whatever you guys recommend, I appreciate.
Okay, at this time, any questions for the board?
Just one, Mr. Chairman, real fast. On the Bass Place side of the property, for Charlie or for Jen, if this was to have been in compliance, where would that fence have been located on Bass Place?
It could be there, but it would have to be four feet high, 50% open.
Okay.
The fact that it's six feet high and solid is not permitted in a front yard.
It could be right up to the curb?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was just for my knowledge. Thank you.
Okay, Jen, do you have any more testimony?
No.
Okay, anything else for the board?
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public.
I'll make that motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
For Mr. Hughes? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second about Mr. Mertens. All in favor? Hey, Eileen, at this time, we'll open it to public for questions or comments.
Okay, for any members of the public, if anyone has any questions or comments regarding this application, please use the Raise Your Hand feature. We'll bring you into the meeting one at a time, and you can put your questions or comments on the record.
You, buddy?
No, and I believe everybody in the audience is for the next application, so.
Okay, can I have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close. That's Moretti.
Motion by Mr. Moretti. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second about Mr. Cantor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, based upon all that we talked about with, you know, giving the permits and, you know, getting the file up to date, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that. Moretti?
Second about Mr. Moretti? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gurney, you can call me tomorrow if you want, and I'll explain the rest of the process to you.
And what was your name, man?
Eileen. I'm the zoning board secretary in the office, okay?
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Take care now.
I know.
Okay, right. Okay. Next case before the board. Case number BA 20101ST, Rock Solid Realty, Preliminary Final Major Subdivision, Use Variants and Bulk Variants Relief. Application Rock Solid Realty Corporation is applicant owners seeking preliminary final major subdivision with use variance and bulk variance relief to subdivide existing lot 19.10 into two lots. Proposed lot 1911 will be 36.487 acres and contain approximately 368,050 square foot warehouse facility, which associates office space and site improvements, which will have access directly from Fairfield Road. Proposed lot 1912 will be 65.75 acres containing the existing solar field, which will be accessed via an access easement on Lot 19.11. As Lot 1912 will not have direct access to an improved street on premises known as Block 168, Lot 1910 Fairfield Road. Expiration date? September 3rd, 2021. Mr. Payton, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, all board members and board professionals, good evening, and thank you. Mr...
Hang on just a second. I just got a text from Jennifer. Her power went off.
Is she on the phone?
I will. Mr. Payton, can we take about a five-minute recess here?
Mr. Chairman, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, then.
The board will take a five-minute recess. They'll be back at 7:38. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay. Permits, Mr. Cantor? Permits, Mr. Cantor. There he is.
Mr. Payton, can you tell me who you need brought into the meeting?
Yes, Mrs. Rubano, please bring in Keisler Wong and Louis Zugner and Christine Cofone.
Okay.
I don't see Keisler on at all, but I I do believe he's there.
He's on the meeting, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moretti. Charles, are you there, Charlie?
Apologize, I didn't realize I uh didn't unmute myself, turned a camera on.
That's okay. Okay, Mr. Payton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, thank you. We, we will be brief, succinct and to the point with our application this evening. This is not an application seeking only development rights. This is an application where your applicant is returning after being in front of this board last November with a a second presentation for a, uh, as as you read into the record, a warehouse building that was approved. At the time of the presentation, the applicant made a commitment to return to the board with a subdivision line so as to create separate ownership of the front parcel, which was addressed by this board last November, and the rear parcel, which was addressed by the board some nine years ago and has been a solar farm for the past eight years. So what we are going to present to you this evening is a one hundred acre parcel of land. We asked that this board allow us to create two lots. One is slightly over thirty six acres and the other is slightly over sixty five acres. The thirty six acre parcel has frontage on the, uh, on Fairfield Road. It is the portion of the property that was reviewed as a warehouse. There's no change to that. There's, we're not, the, the, that, that plan remains exactly as it was. This is the land that was associated with it when it was presented to the board. And we're asking that the rear parcel, the solar, be separated from it. And it's really for a very simple technical reason. It's for, it's for financing purposes. Not for, not, not in any way to change the development approvals. It does trigger technically, and even this one actually stumped me. I had to go to the, figure out why technically. It, it technically triggers a D two variance because the, each of the uses on the property is now going to be on a defined parcel and not on the entire parcel. Fortunately for you and for me, your planner, Ms. Beam, fully understands it. And my planner, Christine Cofone, tells me she fully understands it. I'm going to introduce them, I'm going to introduce Christine to you in an appropriate time and she'll place those proofs on the record. But this is a request for a subdivision of a one hundred acre parcel into two lots, consistent with the uses previously presented. If I may, before we begin the presentation, if either Ms. Rubano or Mr. Tropoli could confirm receipt of our notices and adequacy of our notices for tonight's hearing.
Uh, that is correct. The notices are adequate. Publication is adequate, Mr. Payton.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We intend to present the application to you through two professional witnesses. Mr. Wong, your applicant, is always with us. Um, he is here. I do not intend to call him. There's no development, no, no development taking place. It's, so Mr. Zugner is here to describe the property and the subdivision line. And Ms. Cofone is here to address the vari, the technical variance relief. Although they have both testified before the board previously, I would ask if we could have them sworn. And I'll have each briefly place their credentials on the record for tonight's hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, then, Mr. Zugner, can you unmute, please? And raise your right hands and swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
Right, Christine, starting with you, may we have your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Tropoli. It's Chris Zaro, Cofone, C O F A Z N F R A N E.
Thank you, Mr. Zugner.
Sure, my name is Louis Zugner, spelled Z U E G N E R.
Your witnesses, Mr. Payton?
Thank you. Mr. Zugner, although you've testified before the board, I'd like the record to be complete this evening. Would you provide the board with a brief summary of your education and professional background?
Certainly. I have a engineering degree from Virginia Tech. I have been practicing for now well over twenty years. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states. A founding principal of the firm Mid-Atlantic Engineering, based in Hamilton, New Jersey. And of course have testified before this and many other boards.
Mrs. Zugner, your licenses are all current?
They are.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may he testify as an engineer tonight?
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Zugner, I'm going to ask that you be brief and succinct and to the point. The chairman read a very clear description of the application and my description of the application hopefully was equally clear. It is a subdivision line. You could introduce the property through an exhibit locating the property for all to see. And then I'm going to ask that you move in a couple of steps right to the subdivision line for the board's review.
Hopefully what everyone can see, I put on as a share screen, this is an exhibit titled Existing Aerial Exhibit, and it's dated today, seven twelve twenty one, and this was previously provided to the board secretary.
Yes, it's marked as Exhibit A ten on the exhibit list.
Thank you. And if you could tell us what we're looking at when it was A ten?
Certainly, and I'm sure most of the board members are familiar with the location here. You can see across the bottom of your screen is Fairfield Road. Uh, and then there's to the right, the intersection of Route thirty three and Business thirty three. Uh, we're about seven hundred feet south of that intersection where you can see the red line of the property begin.
And is the red line the perimeter of the lands that are owned by Rock Solid?
Correct, and red is the entirety of the parcel, which you had said before is just over a hundred acres.
And if you could identify the aquamarine dotted line and what that line is intended to show?
Yes, dashed across the middle, and this is a line that had been shown when we done all the prior approvals. This is the proposed subdivision line and it creates the two separate parcels.
And if you could, I think we all can, we all have conjecture as to what the gray is on the rear portion of the property. But would you place on the record a description of what we're all looking at on the rear lot?
Certainly. The rear of the property is solar field, so these are all solar panels. Uh, you can see them in this aerial image. They're not crystal clear, but you can obviously make out the panels, the lines of panels and the gravel paths that access the panel.
And those panels, as Mr. Chair and board members, as we placed on the record um in November of two thousand twenty, those panels have been generating electricity and sending that electricity into the grid now for close to eight years. At in November, it was a little more than seven and we're closing in on eight years of that being an active solar facility. Mr. Zugner, can you move us to your next exhibit?
Uh, this was, this was the exhibit that I was going to use tonight.
Oh, okay.
And you can see, I'll add, you know, quickly, um, in blue.
Thank you.
And in blue, this is what we've created as the access easement. So we would relocate the access path to the solar fields and it would be within that blue easement to the rear of the property.
And I trust that that access easement has been designed to be coincidental with the paved driveway system that is on the front lot as part of the approvals from last November.
Yes, and when we did those approvals, all of the access was shown, just not the easement.
So, so, um, if, if, and if you could confirm the zone of the property?
That we are in the HD Highway Development Two Zone.
And if you could confirm that the size of each of these lots is conforming with the requirements of the zone?
Each lot is conforming, the smaller the two being over thirty six acres and the larger the two being over sixty five acres, as you had mentioned.
And if you, I, when Ms. Cofone testified, she'll address the variance. But the, the, the single bulk variance that is required is for the rear lot to be accessed through an easement and not with direct frontage on the highway.
Correct, there's no direct highway or roadway access.
For the solar field. Mr. Mr. Chair, that is all that I have of Mr. Zugner. There's no, there's no development testimony that, at all. This is simply that line, which is consistent with the representations we made to this board when we were with you last November.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so, um, what I will say is while the applicant's, uh, application is technically a major subdivision, it's almost, um, you know, more akin to a minor subdivision in that they're only creating two lots. The reason it's a major is because this is an amalgamation of, you know, nineteen ten, that's currently existing, was like five or six or seven or eight different lots at one time. Uh, so anytime you're subdividing, you know, creating more than three lots, which were part of prior subdivisions, it triggers the major. So, um, really, it's major, but it's, it's almost technical in, in nature. And as far as reliefs for, um, you know, some of the major subdivision requirements, the street trees, sidewalk frontage and things like that, um, I would take no exception to the board granting relief of those, those items. A, a lot of those are already tech previously covered under the approvals for the warehouse application for, uh, the, what's to become, I believe nineteen eleven, the front parcel on the, along the Fairfield Road frontage. Um, Mr. Payton did confirm they do need relief for the, the rear property for the solar farm. It, it has technical frontage on Route thirty three, the, the bypass. But it's, uh, I, I think on the plans on the subdivision map and on the tax map, it says, uh, access is prohibited. So it has, you know, technical frontage, but it's not access. So I take no exception to the access easement being granted. It looks like it's in, um, conformance with the prior warehouse application with what was presented when this was previously, um, you know, going to be a leased parcel. Um, uh, as far as the planning, I'll, I'll let Jen apply on, on all that. I would just say that for the new lot that's going to be created, which was the subject of the warehouse approval, um, I think the resolution just needs to be very carefully worded where, um, worded where all the prior conditions of the approval and everything that was agreeded in the affirmative carries over to that new lot that's be crea, being created with this, with this major subdivision. Um, the one comment I do have, and it was, it was part of the warehouse application as well, just with the access easement, Lou, um, it does cross across, cross across, um, like a sliver of a DOT parcel along Fairfield Road. Uh, just making sure that you guys get approval, uh, from DOT for that access easement because it, you know, it doesn't actually fully touch, uh, Fairfield Road right away. It's across a DOT owned parcel. Um, uh, applicant has already provided deed of consolidation for the current lot nineteen ten. And they submitted revised subdivision plan, which addressed the blind share of my comments and, and items that need to be revised on the major subdivision. So really, I, I don't have much, um, other to say, other than this is a redrawing of a lot line, you know, to create two lots in same conformance with what was previously shown on, on the prior, uh, use variance. It's just going from a leased area to now two separate lots.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of, from Mr. Zugner, if I might. Um, you know, obviously, uh, the board approved the preliminary major site plan back in twenty twenty. Do you have a timeline? And I think Charlie had mentioned that when I was reviewing this, I was wondering, you know, what kind of a timeline do you have for the, you know, final preliminary site or ten, if you would?
Sure, I, I, although Mr. Zugner is the one who does the lion's share of the work, and that's an understatement. Although Mr. Zugner does the lion's share of the work, um, he did, um, go over approvals with, with me and I then went over them with Mr. Wong. We are, uh, working on, the board will recall, we made a commitment to the board and to the town to design and build a sanitary sewer facility, seven thousand linear feet and a pump station that would bring sanitary sewer facilities to this entire region. That has been the focus of not only Mr. Zugner, but there's also another team from Collier Engineering working with us. That we are well into that. We have, um, worked on all of the outside agencies. We're pending before Free Old Soil. The DOT application is filed and is, is pending. We've, um, met with New Jersey American Water to bring the water service to the site. And we do intend early this fall, the fall of two thousand twenty one, to bring the application for final major site plan before the board. And we do intend, if all goes well, to be under construction in the spring of two thousand twenty two. Or, and, and everything is working well towards that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was that, was this? Mr. Chair, if I could just make one last comment, I apologize, it's not my letter. Um, so I know the applicant's proposing a, a, a new access easement that's going to correspond to the location of the new driveway once everything's, um, you know, buttoned up with the preliminary and final for the warehouse portion of the tract. Um, in the interim, they're utilizing the existing driveway that goes through this new lot that's going to be created. I would suggest maybe the applicant can, um, you know, propose an easement for the existing driveway that sunsets on the development of subject lot nineteen eleven in the future when that new access easement. I just don't want there to be any issues like, and then having to relocate a driveway for access to a solar field when there's one already existing. Would you take any exception to that, Mr. Payton?
No, Mr. Kondov, the only exception is you, you're so smart, you're making me feel inadequate. I think that's a great idea. So.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And, and we can build the sunset clause right into that so that it's permanent, but it sunsets. So it goes away when the other one is, is filed. Perfect.
Uh, board members, do I have any questions of Mr. Zugner?
No.
Okay, Mr. Payton?
So as, as Mr. Zugner indicated, the, and as Mr. Kondov indicated, there was a technicality on the subdivision. It's a two lot subdivision, which under most circumstances would be a minor. But because we have a history of consolidation, we became a major technically. Now, and, and Ms. Cofone is going to take you through the test, the proofs on the variance relief. And again, the D two variance, I believe is technical, but I'm certain that she will eloquently describe it to the board and to Ms. Beam. Ms. Cofone, without interruption, I'm going to ask if you could, in a narrative, identify the proofs that you'll be placing before the board.
Of course. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazaro Cofone. I've been sworn, but I don't think my credentials have been accepted, so do you?
Not yet.
No, thank you. Ms. Cofone, for the, for the record, would you please place those, your education and professional background on the record?
Yes, good evening. I'm a licensed professional planner by exam in the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current and valid. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning. I've testified here in Howell and literally hundreds of other boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, may she testify?
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Cofone, without my interruption and in a narrative fashion, if you could identify your responsibilities and take us through the proofs.
Of course. So again, good evening. Um, for the record, Christine Nazaro Cofone. The reason we're here is seeking a D two expansion of a nonconforming use variance is quite simply is that we are drawing a line and subdividing the property to create two parcels, two separate and distinct parcels. There's a case called the Raspberry case that indicates and held when you reduce the size of a lot that a nonconforming use sits on, that you need to get a D two variance for an expansion of a nonconforming use. I think it's extremely important that we recognize in this application, there is no changes to the development program that was either existing or proposed. So while it indicates that it's an expansion of a nonconforming use, there's not a single square foot of additional development ominous property that wasn't previously approved, contemplated or existing on the subject property today. The sole purpose and intention and genesis of this application is to create two separate lots. Now, if the board will recall, when the application was before you for the use variance in the preliminary and final major subdivision, you granted variance relief to have two uses on one lot, solar film, the solar farm, and then the development program that was to be the proposed application. So in conjunction with this application, we will actually eliminate that nonconformity of the two uses on one lot because the lots were individual. That's all this application is doing. The access program is the same as was previously represented to you in conjunction with the prior application. So I can unequivocally say from a planning point of view that we need our statutory burden of proof that this application will satisfy the positive and negative criteria. That criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land, is satisfied by this application. And then the application can. And then the application can certainly be granted with no substantial detriment to either the zone plan or the public good here in Howell, as again, the development program is identical to what was previously approved by this application. So there will be no impairment to the SED zone zoning that is governing the subject property. And I believe that there's no substantial detriment to either the zone plan or the public good. And the board can certainly move this application, in my opinion, that we satisfy our statutory burden of proof before they grant you the relief.
I thank you.
Real quick, I'll give you a statement of SED. Is this HD?
I'm sorry, HD. Yes, HD2. Sorry, mixing my applications. Sorry, Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I have no further questions of Ms. Cofone. I wanted to make a comment that I failed to earlier. Mr. Coniff indicated that every commitment made by the applicant as memorialized in the resolutions, the prior resolutions, carry forward. And I would indicate that when we were in front of the board in November, we indicated that all commitments that we had made in earlier approvals, to the extent they remain valid and we brought forward. So I would say to you that the commitments that were made with regard to the solar facility and the commitments that were made during the November 2020 application, with no exceptions, are brought forward with this application this evening.
Ms. Beam.
I would agree with the testimony presented. Typically, when we look at a D2, especially when the lot is being reduced in size, we look at can the lot accommodate what we anticipated to be put on it? In this particular instance, it's similar to, let's say, the BJ's application where we've had a number of financial subdivisions where there's lines on paper, but the site still functions the way it was approved initially. And I don't see how this application is really any different from that. They came in, they went through all the proofs for the use variance and the preliminary site plan for the warehouse building. And as Mr. Page had stated, the solar farm has been on the property for a number of years and will continue to operate as is. So I would take no exception to the testimony presented.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
Well. Mr. Page?
I have nothing further on direct, Mr. Chair. Given the opportunity to sum after the public, I'd only require two minutes.
Okay. Eileen, at this time, we'll open to the public for questions and comments. And this is in, the questions and comments are based on the subdivision that's before the board tonight.
I'd like to make that motion to open to public, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Mertens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Eileen, we'll open up the public for comments or questions. And this is dealing with the subdivision, subdivision only. Thank you.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding the subdivision only, use the raise your hand feature, and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. Again, if you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand, star nine to lower your hand, star six to mute or unmute.
Do we have anybody on?
No one has raised their hand.
Give it a few more seconds. Anyone in the public which make a comment or have questions for the applicant in regards to the subdivision of this property, please come forward. Nobody?
Nobody.
Can I have a motion to close public?
And make a motion we close?
Have a motion by Mr. Moretti? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Mr. Page?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As the testimony indicates this evening, this is the drawing of a line to create two opportunities, one for each of the uses. And this gives greater flexibility to Mr. Wong as to ownership and as to financing, critical elements. As indicated by Ms. Beam, not anything changes. It's lines on the ground. And I will again say for the record, and I anticipate Mr. Tropoli will memorialize it with detail, but every commitment that was made by Mr. Wong to this board and to the township of Howell to make certain improvements, to be environmentally sensitive, to bring the sanitary sewer to the area and to pursue all of the outside agency approvals, all of that remains his commitment to the board. We would ask the board to consider this subdivision with a technical variance relief favorably this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Okay, Jennifer, Charlie, do y'all have any further instructions or comments?
Not for me.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based on the testimony. It's just a technicality, and Mr. Wong has been very good as far as cooperating with, moving ahead with the applications that he's supposed to do. And I think this is a good location for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mertens. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Eileen, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Ms. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes, absolutely. We thank you for staying on board with this and keeping it going there, Mr. Page. Mr. Wong, thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Page.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, all board members, thank you and good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, guys, is there any further business of the board?
Could have cleared another case.
Nothing was ready, sorry.
When's our next meeting?
You'll have your chance to stay a little later, don't worry.
Take it when you can get it, Glenn.
I'll run dervises tonight.
We can all go get ice cream now.
Our next meeting is July the 26th, two weeks from tonight. That'll be by Zoom, and then we have two meetings in August also on Zoom. September, we reconvene in the main meeting room in person.
Oh, right.
Beautiful. That means I have to comb my hair, I guess, huh?
Can't wear shorts anymore.
I wore my Carhartt regular butt shirt tonight.
How about a welcome back cake, Eileen?
Yeah.
We'll have to see about that.
Yeah, the rum cake. That'll work. We might need it after that.
You might.
Okay, there's no other further business of the board. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Moretti, seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Good care, everyone. Have a good night.